Thank you.
Everyone's treated fairly now. You only get one word, though.
That's fine. Best for last.
Sure you don't want to be first?
Mm-mm.
Okay.
Way to copy everyone else's answers.
You can go through everyone, everything on the list and...
Well, they got it already, huh? Talking about... Call regular council meeting to order this October 2nd, 2018 at 7:00 PM in City Hall. Conditions to the agenda, appropriation ordinance 10-218 AP2 and the amount of $10,144.21. Hear motion?
So moved. Second.
Motion and a second, any other discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Carrie's 4-0. Citizens' comments this evening?
No, I have heard...
Is that where I talk?
No, we have you in another section, so...
Alright.
Any other citizens' comments? Nope. Anything? Okay. Consent agenda, approved minutes, regular council meeting September 18th, 2018. Appropriation ordinances 10-218 and the amount of $1,3461.27 and 10-218 AP2 and the amount of $10,144.21 cents. Do I hear motion?
So moved. Second.
Motion and a second. Bryant and Christie, any other discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Carrie's 4-0. Department head committee reports, Grand Administrator Lisa Cornwell.
I haven't heard from her.
Okay.
We've got the... I think I told you guys last time, we've got parked benches are right there. She's been talking with Gemma... Well, I don't know if they've been talking, but the crosswalk guard project. We have all of the stuff. We just need to find a time to get together and see if that's going to move forward. I don't know if that's something that she'd been working on before I got here, or if that's part of the same route to school, phase one. It might be that, but... So that's what we'll be working on with her. And that we're still going forward with the playground equipment program for her.
Anything for Lisa? Okay, moving on, please Chief Jim Cudane.
Just a couple of things. We're still moving forward, trying to do applicant... Or interviews and stuff. We've got one scheduled for tomorrow afternoon. Just, it's just been busy trying to play catch-up still, moving forward. Everything's going good. Really, that's all I got for right now, except for... At this time, I would like Sergeant Elliott to come forward.
Did you something wrong?
Yep. I wanted to do a letter, a commendation to Sergeant Bill Elliott for the hard work he's done over the last two and a half months. I want to recognize Sergeant Bill Elliott of the St. John Police Department for outstanding job he has done since becoming sergeant for this agency. Bill has worked an unbelievable number of hours running the day-to-day operation of this agency, keeping law and order in the city, protecting the citizens of the city, in addition to the citizens who visit this fine community. This act is a normal day-to-day job requirement of any police officer for the St. John Police Department, but due to the fact that Bill has done this entirely by himself for the last two and a half months, is an incredible act of selflessness and commitment to serve the city and all the citizens that live here and visit the city of St. John. Bill is an outstanding law enforcement officer. He has the drive, the commitment, and dedication that all law enforcement officers should strive to achieve. The citizens of this city can be proud of Bill Elliott and trust him to do what is right for them 24 hours a day, Sunday to week. Most officers that I know would have just simply given up and gone somewhere else to work under the conditions that that would have been the easy way out, but Bill stayed true to his oath and word and continued to protect and serve the community. Again, this agency, city, community owe Bill Elliott a great deal of respect and gratitude for the excellent job he has done and continues to do. I cannot thank him enough for the outstanding job he has done and continues to do. Again, thank you, Bill, for the outstanding job you've done.
Thank you, appreciate it. That's all I got.
Anything for Jim?
I've heard a lot of good, good comments about you guys all over town... Taking care of stuff, being prompt with them, doing a good job. Both of you express, you know...
You're welcome.
Thank you very much, and that's what we're striving to continue to improve day-to-day and get better.
Absolutely.
That's why I'm picky about who we hire, so that way the next person does the same thing as what we're continuing to do for the community.
Absolutely.
Thanks, Chief. Maybe on fire Chief Michael Sanders? Anything?
No, I haven't heard from him for a while.
Good news is good news.
Anything for the fire chief? Okay, moving on, City Corp Jamie Getty.
Just a reminder, I... If we had training November 3rd from 8 to noon, do we need to call a special meeting? So, decode it on...
You're in a quarrel.
Yeah. So we'll get that done before, and we'll do that next meeting or something.
Okay.
But November 3rd, 8 to noon, is the set date. I'm going to be getting with Wichita State to kind of go over just different things and have her fill me in on what's going to happen. She said there's a couple of different ways that we can go with it, so we'll figure out the best avenue to go on that, and then...
Making sure it's good, use the part time, the material coming.
And then, um... And then from that, the department heads and I will sit down with our staff and have... Maybe not a training, but we need to go over the new handbook that's going to be coming into effect, and, um... I think that I can speak for all of us, a meeting of the minds and getting back on the same page for, for all departments and working as a team would be beneficial right now, so...
Absolutely.
The other thing is with the delinquent accounts. I did some digging back in 2009, and I can't find it being repealed again, but they have an ordinance where the fee is charged at 25% if it's sent to set off for collections. It's not like, it's not company-specific, so the downfall of using this company is that we will have to eat 5% of what... Not eat it, but we'll have to pay 5% of what is collected. And so, and but if we do move forward with this company, we can change the ordinance to say the 30, but we can't go back and say, "Our fee's now 30%. You owe us 30% on top of what you owe." So what has...
But everything, everything that comes forward after that will then apply that.
Correct.
All current accounts would be assessed at the 25.
Do you have a signed copy of that ordinance, though?
Yeah, it's in the book. I can't find it online, so I went to the paper... Still trying to find it in the actual code, but there's an actual signed copy in the ordinance book. I, um, talked to John a little bit after council meeting last time, and, um, for like the fee, what he was talking about was more municipal court stuff, so I really think that this would be a beneficial, beneficial avenue to take, because we're, we're still... I mean, we're still looking at like $40,000 of accounts that have been sent to set off, and we've collected maybe $1,000 in the last... I don't know how many. I mean, we don't get very much money at all, so adding this company will help increase, and basically, they're going to go bug the people and say, "Hey, you owe us money," on top of it being at set off. Because when you send it to set off, it goes in, in like an order, and you may or may not ever get your money. So, and I know you guys said to proceed, but John and I needed to talk about that and bring it back, so I think I can sign... I mean, I can sign with the company, I just need... I'm for sure okay with you guys, and the next council meeting will change the ordinance to go to 30% for the collection fee.
Right now, we don't have a collection. The agency working on it at all, right?
We have the Kansas Set Off Program.
It requires that they pay taxes, that they have a tax refund, and that they don't owe a bunch of child support.
Yeah, because it, and it goes in private, I think, yeah.
Below the line.
It just...
Right.
Yeah. And they're still, once we go through this list, I think I'll still come back and with an amount to write off, like, just write completely off, because there's some of these that are deceased and stuff like that, but I didn't want to do any of that until I got into contact with the guy, just to make sure that we can't do... Just so he can look it all over before we're writing things off that we shouldn't write off.
Yeah, if they're deceased and it hasn't been more than four months, then there's no estate. You can get anything from them anyways.
I'm just a little nervous with the, like, because I found one that's on here that shouldn't be on here and that I for sure know of, so I want him to look at what can be written off or not. I don't really have anything else besides "Look at your community connection this month," because there's a lot of information, a lot of stuff going on. So, if you guys want to participate in trunk or treat, the girls and I would be very willing to come up with a theme for six people and decorate your trunk for you. Just so you know.
Sounds like crickets.
I don't have a trunk.
Can we set some cattle paddles up around our trunk?
Yeah, you can park over there.
Oh, were you being serious?
Yeah, I was being serious.
I was thinking I'd truck a cop car for you guys.
I'm going to decorate your trunk.
I'm not sure you're doing something, but it'd be nice to know what.
Oh, you would be good, okay.
I want some glow sticks, boys.
We have glow sticks.
I know, but they got kids to take out that day. I got to take less than that at some point.
Yep.
I can help with something.
I'll be proud.
That's all I have, I think.
Did you need a consensus on the questions, or what are you wanting at this point from us?
Well, contracts have to be signed by the mayor, right?
I don't think so.
Assuming there's a contract.
Um, yeah.
Then just a vote to give an authority to enter into the agreement.
A vote for... Make that 25% down quick.
That's what it's been?
Well, right now, it'll have to, like, whatever has been accumulated has to stay at the 25%, but then the next council meeting, I'll have the ordinance ready to go. I mean, I guess I could do it now.
Yeah, I mean, I'm sure, I guess there could be a motion to amend the existing ordinance to increase it to 30%.
Yeah, I don't know. I was going to think 30% is probably...
Well, right, but the company...
Takes 5%.
Well, it charges 30%. It tacks on 30% of the collected amount. And that's where the 5% comes in, because we can't just raise it 5% and say, "Well..."
And I don't, can't remember, but in their formula, though, on how that... Do they take 30% off the top, or do they, do they collect your, the city's part cost and then collect their fee as a 30? Because doesn't it say that some, but they don't remit the entire thing on a monthly basis, they...
Try to get payments.
I just, I can't remember how that was going.
I have to look at those papers again.
Would be nice to know exactly how it works before we wind up in a fight with it.
Do you have a copy of that contract? Can we look at it real quick? We'll just come back to it in a minute.
Jamie, what else from you other than that? Anything for Jamie at this time?
Just something that Jamie and I discussed here the other day regarding the agenda. It's kind of my attention that some members of council have requested this be delayed in posting to the public until they get a chance to read everything that's in the packet. While I understand that that's what all of us have to do, because we all have other jobs and other lives that we have to take care of, it does go against Code of Procedure 1-211, subparagraph, let's see, Section C, Subparagraph 1, where it clearly states that the, once the agenda is made, it is presented to the governing body, and it therefore needs to be presented to the public at the same time. So, while we all don't get a chance to look at it right away, we need to, as soon as that is published to us, it needs to get put out to the public, so just wanted to bring that up.
Absolutely. It doesn't get published until I see it, so...
It's been published all...
Right, well, here's, here's the deal, is we can, we, we don't have to post it in 15 different locations, as long as we have the front door of City Hall posted by the time it's done, then it's fine.
Usually, you go just to give one to the press or something, and so it's really, if you have like a, I don't know if there's an email...
I send it, yeah, there's like three people on the email.
Yeah, you just can't exclude somebody for one.
And that's actually how it's supposed to be set up, is they're supposed to come in and fill out a form to get notifications of the agenda. But we go above and beyond to help everyone out, and we post it on the website, the front door, Facebook, where have you.
Right.
This might go with it, John.
Sure.
That's just a separate page, the first one's...
So all those extra things are service, so as long as it's on the door by the time it's printed, I'm okay with it, and that's what I instructed Jamie to do.
And I just...
Unless council wanted to change, unless council wanted to change that, council could change that.
And I've been waiting to post it on the website and Facebook until Monday morning to give you guys a chance to look it over because of, I don't remember the issue, you guys were getting bombarded with stuff before you even knew about it. So, it was posted, it was sent via email. I just didn't do the extra steps until Monday.
Monday's a business day, so that's only time you need to post the, you need to post it on the account. First business day.
Well, the whole thing that brought this all up is the reason, when I had got it through the email, I went and put it on the SSC TV...
On Facebook.
Facebook. And that's the whole, that brought it, the whole issue up, so I'm, as far as...
Isn't that Jamie's job?
Yep, but it's still news. It's a public service announcement, and the people still need to understand that this is what's going on. This agenda is of public information. So, I'm going to still continue to post it on the SSC TV's, on Facebook page, and I'm within my rights to do so.
Sure. Doesn't that hedge tails for me?
I don't know.
I just continue to do...
I'll do whatever you need me to do.
Continue as it's written. And make sure that when it's sent out, that it's put on the door.
I don't have to post it anywhere?
Put it on the door. If you'd like to put it on Facebook, you are more than welcome to. I really don't care what time, when, it could be at midnight on Saturday, whatever, as long as it's on the door, once it is sent out to everyone, that's great for me. And that's as the book says.
Do you want to write that down?
That's what the codex says.
You're not going to have any hair left by the time you get through with this job.
That's for sure.
Chief, can we talk about this for a second?
Yes.
Okay, so interest, so they get a judgment against somebody and there's like statutory interest, which in Kansas is almost 6%. The agency will keep all of that interest. Right now, you guys aren't getting anything anyways. They do, so they have got this, it's not really a funky provision, but what they're going to do is they're going to send the money here, you'll apply it to the individual accounts, so Jamie will continue, you have to keep the client accounts updated, and then make those reports back to the agency, so the agency is aware of where everybody sits on how much they owe. And then you are to remit back to the agency any amount due to the agency within 30 days. So you'll get all of the money, and then you'll have to remit. So I think, I'm assuming the way this is read, that you'll get like an invoice that says, "Here's the full amount, this is how much is owed to us," but you attribute the full amount to the individual client's account, and then remit back to them what's owed to them. And the collection goes up to 50% if it's out of state. You've probably got a bunch of those people that are gone, that are out of state.
Counsel?
The 30%, so you, if, if you guys, if somebody owes $100, and there's a 30% collection fee, now they owe $130. The agency is going to take 30% of $130. They're not going to take 30%, they're not going to take the $30. That's how that would work. And that's really the only way you can do it, because they're not going to collect $130 at the time. They're going to collect $15 every paycheck from that person for however long it takes to pay off.
I'm good with it.
Yeah, my thought is you're not going to collect...
So collect like 39% instead of 30. Work it out.
I think the maximum that they can pass on, that we can pass on is 30%.
If you collect anything, it's better than what you've collected up to date.
Right.
Which is nothing.
Yeah, and I'm not sure you want Jamie turning to a collection. I mean, collection agencies have all kinds of rules and laws they have to follow.
So, I'm fine with it.
Do I need a consensus or a motion?
Who needs, because somebody's got the authority to sign. Client, I think the mayor has the sign, so I think there's to be a...
If there's no change, you wouldn't make a motion.
Well, it doesn't change because that's a new company that we're going with.
I think you just have to have, you have to have a motion to give the mayor authority entering into the agreement.
Absolutely. Second.
Motion and a second. Dorn, Sanders, any other discussion? All in favor? All opposed?
Can I direct it to prepare an ordinance updating the one from 2009?
Yes.
Okay.
Anything else?
Ordinance 989.
Okay. Moving on, City Superintendent Jeff Williamson.
Just a couple of things. One, the bucket trucks done. They're supposed to pick it up tomorrow. I got called this afternoon. Amazing, isn't it? 30 days. So, anyway, we'll go get it in the morning. Other thing is that here a while back, I don't remember whether I told you guys or I didn't, that we'd been having trouble with a street sweeper, and the sweeper been down, and I called Sellers in Wichita, which are the people that we bought it from originally. And he told me he was pretty sure he knew what was wrong with it, except they sold out the bearing, and as of last Friday, they're now Berry Equipment. So, the Berry Equipment mechanic came out, which he's been here before, worked on our grader and stuff. He did kind of extensive search on it, and there is a, a shaft that is, has no teeth left on it, on the hydrostat. In fact, he had it split apart and showed me exactly where it was. It's not a major deal, but I told him to go ahead and fix it, so it doesn't run without it. I mean, it'll move, but it won't sweep, it won't do nothing, so I, I don't expect the bill to be very high. I don't know what very high is, but I think it'll be reasonable. It's easy to get to, you know, so, but we'll hold our breath anyway, so. Anyway, that's really all I got.
Was there a figure on the bucket truck?
He didn't say. We got to take that little excavator back in the morning. I don't know whether I'll be coming back in after I see the bill or not. Retire, so. But it's done, either way.
We got it's working on over here.
We're doing this at the request of the, of the girls in the office, so...
Cleaning it up. It looks like bush can...
We've taken, we've taken all the broken concrete out around the flower beds. We've removed all the bushes. We've removed all the rose bushes. Going to go back in with flowers and some new edges along the fountain and water in the fire, the flower beds, and moving some sprinklers around, and, and just a few odds and ends. We thought if we'd skin it up this time of year, it'd be healed by spring, so this is the best time to do it, so. A new look out there. We think, you know, that the same old picture for so long. This plumber over here was getting pretty rough, so we just thought it was time to just go in and clean it up, so, anyway. We're not going to get to use a little, I, I had the excavator for a week. It's supposed to rain for the next six days. We're going to take it back. If we need it again, we'll go get it. It's about $500 for a week, and it's been well worth every dime of it, so, but...
Way better than a shovel. Way better than a shovel.
Oh, way better than a shovel. We've hauled a lot of stuff out here. I mean, a lot of stuff.
Looks good, Jeff. Looks really good.
But we're hoping that everything that we're doing is improvement now, you know, and, and we've had a lot of good comments about it from people. I do want to talk to Warren Brothers about blasting the lampposts and the fountain again. I'm going to stop tomorrow, if I got time, and talk to the guy that powder coats down on the south end of Great Bend. I really would like to powder coat that fountain. I think it's a long-term solution. Fountain's pretty feeble, so we get it blasted down and look at it and see. We did take it apart about 20 years ago. That's the last time it's been apart. It's been painted there once since then, but, you know, it would be a solution that would never have to be touched again if it's done right, so I'd like to put some costs together on that in the lamppost and clean them up. I mean, they're old, and we handle them with kid gloves, but still, if we don't think we can tear it apart without damaging it, we won't. We'll just have it painted in place, but talked to Trent Sully a couple of times during the summer. Sometime this winter, we're going to repair the bowl on that fountain. That bowl's in getting in really bad shape, too, but we haven't been able to get together on a time to do it yet, but just some updates that we think probably needed to be done. We want to do something with some picnic tables over there and some benches, and, and so, you know, if nobody squeals too loud, we're probably going to do some improvements. Maybe to the betterment of the whole community, something that's usable. Maybe we'll get used more. We'd like to put some semen in a few places where the picnic tables go, so that they don't get drug all over there anymore, and then we can mow around them, and they'll last a whole lot longer, they don't get torn up by getting drug around. And some benches in a few places, maybe some of these benches and some others, so we'll kind of see. But the girls are the ones that started this. They just, they just said, you know, "It just looks bad, we need to do something," and so they wanted my permission. I said, "You don't need my permission, but I'll be glad to do it. You just tell me what you want done." So, we've been working together pretty close. Girl's been over and helped us a couple of days. I mean, it's, we have done it all by ourselves, so, anyway, but as we get time, we're working on it. We've got some line work to do, but we're kind of putting it off until we can get the equipment we need to pull the wire in. The stuff that we're going to pull in west of the rest home, we need a special set of pullers in order to do it. Poisonton has some, they're using theirs right now, they own them, and they've offered to let us use them as soon as they count available, so. Grocery store stuff's all done. That's about all I got. The survey's done. I talked to the surveyor today, and there's some strange, strange layout out on Fifth Street, but, but he did what he was hired to do, so, anyway, that's all I've got.
Anything else, Mr. Jeff?
Just a comment. Jeff, I just wanted to say thank you for, once again, allowing community-based training to job shadow. My student really enjoys coming over and learning everything that all you guys have to, to teach him, so thank you very much.
It's been, it's been a lot of fun with him, and I hope before the winter's over, we can teach him a little bit more, you know?
Absolutely.
So, yeah, thank you.
Jeff, is there any idea on the street sweeper repair, on how much it will cost?
I don't have a clue, because, see, with them trading over to Berry, he didn't even know what the parts cost. He, they're trying to shuffle all this stuff around. I can't tell you. I'm going to guess a couple thousand dollars, you know? I don't think it's going to be real extreme, but, but still, you know, by the time he comes out and does it, we've got it opened up for him. He's been in there, and it's underneath, it's underneath the hopper is where it's at, so, but he had it spread apart, so it didn't look like it was a major type deal that would be too long. I hope, you know? If not, I guess we'll put it up for sale when we get done. I don't know.
Just thought maybe it's just wear and tear.
It's just, yeah, I mean, it's 15, 16 years old, you know? This is the first time we've ever had any trouble with it, so, but it's just a weak spot in the hydrostat, is what it is, and it's been kicked off and on a million times, you know, so, I don't know. I can't really say. I don't, I, I wish I could tell you, but I don't know, right? I really don't.
Just another question of the... See, there's been digging up in the street up on Ninth Street...
on Ninth Street. Is that just water line repairs? That what?
Yeah, we had two leaks up there north of Donny Pounds. And, and what we come up with is there's, we laid a four-inch line in there in the nineties that went west to West Street and then north there up to Steve Franks. Laying parallel to it, about three, four feet apart, there's a two-inch steel line that ran into the street, which is where the leaks first started showing up. Well, on two different occasions, when they built up in that area, the water line went north, plastic up to, uh, from Ninth Street north. And then as houses got built from Mark Green's going south, why, then they extended that line south, but they tapped it in in two different places. And so, we're going to tie all that over on that four-inch line, and we're going to cut that steel clear off, clear back at the corner. Because it's just paper thin. I mean, you can just stick your finger through it. But we're waiting on some parts. So, as soon as they get here, we're going to tie the taps on that. Then we got to retap the house clear on the west end where Aaron Mahurder lives. Uh, it's still on the old line, and we're going to cut the rest of it off. But we're just, in fact, the gal was by yesterday. The parts are on order. As soon as the taps come, we'll do it. So, should be in the next week, I hope, we'll get it covered up. So, just another case of do it cheap and get it done, you know, and that's kind of the way I'm in. I mean.
I was just curious. I didn't call one of you guys to ask you just?
Yeah, yeah. It leaked for a little while before we caught it. And, uh, then when we dug it up, we found two spots within about three feet that were just clear gone and leaking. So, we, we clamped them for now, but they're still seeping. But we wanted to get that cut off as soon as we can, get it tight over on that plastic. So, anyway.
Moving on, City Attorney John Breveland.
Don't really have anything to add.
Anything, John? Okay. Moving on to me. There's been a little bit of, I don't know what to call it, but I just wanted to bring it up. Um, as far as employees go, uh, I know we all talk to employees on a daily basis, which is a great thing, and that's within everybody's rights to do. But, uh, I would just ask that you remember, everybody remember, uh, whether it's us or our employees and everybody, to follow their chain of command, uh, because I know it's caused some tension and some issues. So, just be courteous to that and, and remember, you know, go talk to them, see what's going on, find things out. But if you'd like something done, then this is the place when that needs to be taken care of. So, appreciate you guys. That's all I have this evening.
Grocery store. Did you want to know that? For this, the grocery store opening?
Yes, I forgot about that. Um, grocery store opening will be on the tenth. Um, I would certainly appreciate if everybody could make a little time to get out there and be a part of that. I think it's at ten o'clock, ten to noon. Uh, if you can just drop in and be there. I know they're probably going to have the ribbon cutting. I haven't gotten a whole lot of information from Carolyn then. She had asked if I would be willing to be on the program to speak, and I said I would certainly be willing to do that if, if she wanted, wanted that. So, um, I know they're going to be doing several different things. Um, it's been a big deal, so it'd be great if everybody could be there. If nothing for me, move on to old business. The road survey. Do we have anything else on that, Jeff?
No, as I said, it's done. Uh, we, we moved some stakes. If you go down Southwest Street, you see there's some stakes missing on, uh, that property at Corn Wells. We put some steel stakes in the ground so they could cut their feet down. We know where they're at. We're going to stake them back, and then when we're ready to pull the ditch, why, we know exactly how far we can go. So, we did that for the convenience of them, and we didn't want the feet in our ditch. So, we just figured that it'd be better that we didn't have to roll it up with the dirt. So, we went ahead and did some steel stakes down in the dirt. We'll locate them and we'll put the sticks back. So, uh, as I said, out on Fifth Street, there are some offsets, some kind of oddball looking offsets. Those were, those were tracks, uh, when that was originally incorporated into the city. And so, you'll see some strange, you know, some stakes that look a little strange. Um, I have notified the phone company that we have some phone pedestals that are out, uh, inside, on the roadside of the right-of-way. Uh, should we decide to do anything on the drainage, they're going to have to be moved. So, I did contact, uh, the phone man here's supervisor, and he, he was to pass it on to the engineer, and he was to get back with me. It's been over a week ago. I haven't heard anything back from him. If I don't hear another week, I'm going to call him. So, uh, the street is very narrow. Uh, it's only a forty-foot right-of-way. So, I've been in contact with Chris, and we've discussed some things on, on what we think should be done out there. We want to try and keep engineering out of it if we can to keep the cost down, should anything come of doing anything with the street. So, uh, you know, as far as sewer manholes, things like that, we're going to try and take care of as much of it ourselves as we can. If we have a grade, we know what we can do. So, uh, and keep an engineering fee out of it. So, that's the way we're going to work it at this time. Uh, he told me, says he got a little time. We'll sit down, do some more talking. But that's kind of where we're at on that. So, uh, other than that, I guess that's about it.
But it looked like there was very much slope, Jeff, for?
He doesn't do slope running. He only does, he only does width is all, yeah. And depending on how far back you'd want to go, whether you went three hundred feet, or you went six hundred feet, or where you go, that's going to be dependent on what happens to the west also, because we're going to have to take in mind that anything that we leave open to drain in there, if we happen to close part of it up, that we've got to have it right, so that all that back to the west will drain. So, anyway, that'll be something that we, we try to leave to a minimum in order to be able to catch that from the west. We'll see what happens when Chris and I get together. So.
Moving on to dumpster. Do anything with it? Let it die? Take it off? What do you want to do?
Take it off.
Everybody okay with that?
I think so.
Put it on after the first year.
Do you want me to make a note?
No, I'll remember.
Okay. Property on West Street.
Is that me?
Uh-huh.
Okay. Um, I don't know if anybody's been out there since Sunday, but my son-in-law and daughter went out on Sunday. It's all mowed. We leveled up dirt around the two existing concrete structures. We're leaving that structure there to set our new buildings on, because it is still good. Uh, it's baby steps, but it's coming right along. And I think if you go out and look at it, you will agree with me that it is coming a long way. And we're still just hammering at it.
Thoughts on the council?
I looked at it today. It looks, I mean, they've got all the rocks and loose stuff picked up and mowed up and trimmed up. I think it looks fine. I mean, that's progress on it. I'm fine with it.
Drove by it myself this afternoon and saw you had the pile over there nice and neat, and then everything else was mowed up and cleaned. So, yeah.
Yeah. That pile of concrete that's there, we're planning on using it. That's why it hasn't been trucked off. But, yeah, we're getting there. Like I said, with my income, it's baby steps, but baby steps build up into crawling and walking and.
Sure.
We'll be up and going as soon as I can get it there.
I've driven by it. Looks good. Appreciate you taking care of that. Looks a lot better than it did before.
I have to give credit where credit is due. I'm in no mobile state to be doing that. So, thank you very much.
Is council satisfied with the current state?
I'm satisfied.
Have you done?
Yes.
You need a motion? You need just consensus?
Consensus is fine.
I have consensus that everything's okay with that property. Jim? Okay. Okay, moving on to truck snow routes.
Um, it's been brought to our attention that we went over truck routes last year. We put up the signs, but there's no ordinance that was ever passed. So, John sent over this ordinance a year ago, and I had forwarded on to Jeff. And, um, I tried to get ahold of Stafford to get their ordinance, because I think that they, I thought that they had their truck and snow route together. So, I was going to try to look at that, but Jamie wasn't able to get her hands on the truck route. She sent over the snow route. Um, but I provided in your packets the, the ordinance that John had sent over a year ago. Um, but basically, um, to enforce the current truck route and snow route that we have signs all over town for, we need an ordinance to back that up. So, um, I don't know if you want to use this one. Jeff really wanted to look at the one from Stafford, but like I said, I tried to get ahold of Jamie, and she was going to do some digging, and I never, I never heard back. So.
Oh, it's a big deal. It's coming up with one. If you just wrote one up, I mean, instead of waiting for another town's?
I like this one.
He wrote this one a year ago.
Like, who did?
John. Yeah, yeah.
Last time I was talking about.
Yeah. Jeff, Jeff.
This is all just truck route, though. The snow route's a different deal.
Right. John, question on this. As far as depending on what we put in, um, where the designation of those routes are, what about people who own and operate or have one and park it at home?
I think that was one of the issues.
Will they be exempt, or what would?
I think Stafford has a two-hour parking, right, Jeff?
If we get all the ordinance, that's why.
So, two-hour ordinance, parking ordinance, and they have to park somewhere else other than on the streets?
It would change things.
And drive around town and see where trucks are parked and see if they're turning up our streets.
Right. There are some pretty bad areas. I've talked to Jeff about it, and, uh.
The last time we talked about this, it was just for harvest or something. That's why it came up.
Right.
The big thing on where we've got the signs set right now is not the weight of the trucks on the street. It's the turnip. The turnip's what's tearing them up. And it's, and it's coming back on the First Street. I mean, you know, Ryan and I discussed this quite a little bit. Marshall and I've talked about it a little bit too, that, that, uh, as long as these trucks are anymore, and, uh, especially with spread axle trailers, that, uh, when they turn them onto that fresh oil and fresh sand, and we've got any kind of temperature outside, it just cuts them like a knife. And I mean, it just, uh, you know, we've, and I think for the most part, you know, even though we've really kind of, we haven't had an ordinance for it, I think we've had pretty good, pretty good, uh, amount of them have kind of followed the truck route signs. You know, we've tried to keep them off of, off of Monroe and Pearl and, and Prairie Street coming from the elevator because of the turnip back on the First Street. But I would say over ninety percent of them are using Broadway and coming, you know, up and down and turning there at First Street and coming back towards the highway. So, I, I think we have helped some. I mean, you know, we, we've tried to not be too nasty about it, but I, you know, I don't know. I really think that in order, there's going to be some of them that are going to push it to the point unless we write them a ticket, they're not going to stop. And, uh, so.
Remind me which, which streets are the truck routes that you have posted right now?
We have no trucks on, on Prairie, uh, from the elevator north.
Right.
From, uh, Pearl, from First down to north of the Scowl House, and from Monroe. So, the first three blocks east of Broadway. So.
Okay, so we, we really haven't, when you decide which streets are actually the truck routes?
And we've really just designated First Street right now at this point, you know, because, you know, eighty percent of the trucks that are coming into town, maybe more, are going straight to the elevator and back out. You know, I mean, we have a few. We have some that are here in town that don't, but the, the majority of them are going straight to the elevator. And a lot of them come in from the south and turn around and go back out to the south too, you know? But if we could just stop them in those three blocks as far as weighted trucks at this point in time, you know, unless you do an ordinance that, that doesn't permit anything over two hours, why?
Right.
Or you want to completely eliminate no trucks except for delivery, you know?
I think the only thing on this one, though, you need to look at what you're in excess of twenty thousand pounds?
That's a loaded one-ton truck with a trailer.
Loaded one-ton truck with a trailer.
It is. Yes, sir. It is. The empty sum might be thirty-five.
What number do you want there?
Well, it, it just needs to be something. I mean, I load my tire truck down and drive through town. I'm going to wait according to what you're saying right here. And I know Davis's, if they hook onto their big, big Dodge truck with a trailer and a trencher on it, they're overweight.
Yeah.
I think we're more concerned about the ninety thousand, ninety-five thousand, hundred thousand trucks instead of thirty-five thousand pound trucks.
Well, we have water trucks in and out of town all the time too, and they're not the ones that are doing it either.
Right. I mean, I.
And they're fifty-four, or, or rated at fifty-four, or set at fifty-four.
It's legal loaded, right? So, it's eighty-five.
Most of them would not be loaded.
Well, no, that's not.
Or there's occasions where, you know, because they've loaded water, they're going to throw down.
The state just allowed a special permit with third axle to carry ninety-five thousand, I believe, legally. I think they, you can get a permit now to legally haul ninety-five, five, I believe, or something, if you have three axles on your trailer. But that's just been within the last six months, I think, that the state's allowed that.
Right.
So, do you guys want to make changes to this ordinance, or do you want to table it so you can think?
Well, I think maybe we ought to see also compare it to Stafford's and do some comparisons in there.
Let's table it against Stafford's.
I mean, I think we need to.
I think we could look around and just, you know, the small towns in general, or say even to Pratt or Larnet or whatever, you know, and get a consensus there of kind of what works for everybody else, I think. Is, I think once you get them broke to it, you know, if it's, if it's the same way here as it is in Pratt, or it is in Great Bend, or it is in Larnet, pretty soon they're going to get, they're going to figure it out, you know? So.
Because it might be shared already.
I mean, we table it till we get more information.
I can do some checking on, on the.
The snow routes, you know, a whole nother deal, just for blatant snow. I mean, clear, you know, we only designated so many blocks, uh, Main, Broadway, First and Fourth for emergency vehicles. And that's really all we, we designated for that. So.
But you guys are looking at wanting to do like a two-hour minimum parking for any semi?
Two-hour maximum.
Or that's what I mean?
No more than two hours, yes.
So, I mean, whatever you do, there's probably fifteen semis parked around this whole town where, where they got to go. I mean, there's guys that have a farm and stuff, but you guys got to realize.
I get it. I mean, I, I realize why, you know, even if they have an empty property in town, they want to park it next to their house. They don't get stuff stolen. They want to plug it in and nicely start their truck. I get it. I just, you know, we just need to look at some of the streets around town where they do park and the intersections they block. I mean, it's a problem, you know, whether they just need to be talked to or, you know, we need to enforce something.
Or we figure out a place that we can leave to them so that they can park, you know, off-street.
At least that.
That has, that has police, you know. I mean, you go to a lot of places. There's, there's places designated for them to park. I mean, you go to Pratt, you won't get any trucks in Pratt, I know. So, they have, they have a lot to park them on. So.
I mean, you know, we're in a farming community, and then.
Yeah, you guys need to be careful.
No, I, I, yeah.
I don't necessarily have a problem with a parking. I mean, there are quite a few that park that are empty, and empty is not near as bad as being fully loaded. And I think the ones that are tearing up the streets when they park are the ones that are loaded every time. You know, I, I have been looking and talking to some property owners closer to the center part of town that would be willing to sell property if the city decided that they want to put in a designated spot for trucks. Now, I'm not going to say that it's ideal place, but I'm not going to say it's probably more than four, maybe five trucks would be able to fit in there.
I mean, but still, we'd have to provide electricity. I mean, you can't expect somebody to park there and start it when it's ten degrees down.
Providing electricity is going to be cheaper than.
But some of these, some of these places that trucks are parking have maybe been parking there for a couple of years, and the street's.
Toast.
Toast.
No, and I'm okay, I'm okay with, with having them parked on the street, but we need to have something to offer. You can't say you can't park there and that's a problem.
And that's what I'm saying. I don't know is, you know, an empty truck, I'm probably not that concerned about, but if we give them a spot for it when they're loaded, that they can pull off of our streets and not have to sit there hours upon hours all weekend long before they leave again on Monday, and give them something that's halfway secured and electricity, I'd be more than happy to eat the electricity that it costs to keep them thankful compared to what it costs us to fix a street. compared to what it costs us to fix a street.
Draw up a hole and some lighting and make it sure.
We should at least talk for that if we're going to be looking into...
And I think if we do that, I think we need to get with the majority of the people that drive trucks and have a meeting with them.
Something you need to look into because...
I'm perfectly fine with that. I just, I was getting that we need to have something to offer.
Right.
Sure.
So, I think that's a good idea.
Yeah, when you sign a check for $35,000 to do a piece of street to fix it, you know, and that's going the cheap route.
Well, the thing is, is still, when you get it broke down by a semi and by that weight, it's not just taking out six inches and putting it back in. You're going a foot, two foot because it's, it's tore it out bad.
Majority of the streets in town were started with road oil and sand. And I mean, there's a lot of the residential streets that aren't very thick. I mean, I saw a case of a, of a trailer that went over down here in the south end of town a couple of years back. He tried to dolly down on the, the street. Street wasn't any thicker than that table. And he was loaded and it rolled over. And it did horrible damage to the street. But, um, I'm just here to protect your money and when I only get 60 or 70,000 dollars a year to do roadwork, why we have to be kind of careful about where we string it out, you know?
Right.
So...
It's something we just need to look into. You know, it's, you know, that's for your profession. Have their truck somewhere close to their house, but it's concerning.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, we figured out the snow routes then too?
Tabled until next meeting?
Snow routes just to have your vehicles move when we plow. That's a big thing, you know, because when we plow, we plow out.
So, I didn't, I, I don't know if I missed that or if that was last year, but so basically where the snow route's at, there's no vehicles to be parked on the, on the edge of the road?
Exactly.
Okay.
Yeah.
Which ones is that road?
First, Fourth, Main and Broadway.
Okay.
That's, we try to get to the school, get to the ambulance, you know, things like that, downtown services. Just to get it cleared off because a lot of times, uh, you know, and you don't make friends doing it anyway. Because when you plow it one way, then somebody's mad because you plowed it all on them, you know? I mean, we just...
We'll try to send out...
We just roll it out and we try and get a tractor behind it to clean up what we can and the rest of it, I can't eat it, so we got to do something with it.
We'll try to inform the public tomorrow.
Jim, do you have something else?
On the truck, my suggestion of what we did several years back in Fredonia, it seemed to curtail some of the problems. We allowed the truckers to park their trucks in their yards and, but they had to drop their trailers off at, you know, a convenience store or something like that. And that saved our roads quite a bit once we started doing that. And the truckers were fine for the most part with that because they were allowed to park at home. So, they had the security there. We just didn't want them on the streets because they were doing the same, same situation, so...
It'd be a good idea to have somewhere to park their trailers. Then we don't have to provide electricity or lighting. And then they take the truck, park it in their driveway and plug it in.
Right, and I'm not opposed to that. I mean, if, but if they're loaded, you have to, you're going to put forth a little bit of money wherever they park their trailers, if we're giving them a spot.
Yeah.
I mean, some concrete and some pads, you know, at least for the dolly wheels or dolly legs.
Yeah. Well, I knew we hired you for something, Jim.
This is a suggestion, so...
Good idea.
Well, it's certainly a way to meet in the middle because again, you're not...
Stafford's is over 36,000 pounds.
So, again, enough to park the truck.
Four hours. Four hour minimum.
Four hour max. Four hour maximum.
They've got the big lot at the Ampride out there to park at, so, you know, all the truckers over there just park out there.
But they don't have any electricity.
They don't have any electricity.
And they just pull in their park.
Okay, moving on, Hudson Sewer.
Um, you'd asked me to kind of figure out what we should do about, uh, charges if we went up and rotted a main sewer for them. And I sat down and kind of figured what I thought the truck was worth and, and it usually always takes two guys when we go up there. And I figure if we did it by the foot and we did it just off of the gates wheel, off of what hose we've put in the sewer, that about a dollar sixty a foot, that would come out to about, um, $500 a block. You know, whether you're there an hour, you're there three hours. I mean, if you did it by the foot, that's the way you'd do it. But, um, that way we could recover some costs. We might make a little bit of money on it and still help them out. I think probably is reasonable or more reasonable than most anybody would. We're close, but I haven't discussed this with Brett. I haven't been able to get ahold of him. I was going to try and shake loose or nothing catching, but I've been a little busy, so... But, um, you know, it might make the city a little revenue and still I think it's fair enough for them that, and they might want to rod the whole town one time. They might want to do it, you know, as needed. But the way we've done it in the past was we've done it by the hour. I think by the foot, the foot's probably a little more fair. And I think, you know, it would give us some compensation for what we do. So...
Well, I mean, at, at the end of the day, we're just making sure we're not coming in negative and painful because I mean, with stuff, we've got stuff breaking down left and right.
Well, I understand that and that's the whole reason. I mean, i- if you're only charging them $50 an hour, who's making money? You know? And that's kind of the way it's been to this point. And I would at least ma- make it so we could justify going up there. Because if we do, if we do break a truck down, we got to fix it.
I'm just trusting you with whatever you come up with.
At, at five, at $500 a block, I mean, we could make a little money at it if that truck does the way it's done in the past. You know, it would be mostly, it would be mostly profit.
Who's going to direct you when you're up there? I mean, are they going to tell you where to go?
They've got a city guy up there.
Well, if they're, if they're directing you how to use the equipment, why don't, why don't we make them responsible for paying for breakdowns?
They don't direct us about where to use, just what's plugged up is all. I mean, that's all they tell us is, I mean, they don't tell us how to run the equipment.
They're not saying, you know, try harder, push harder.
No, my guys run the equipment the way they see fit. No, they just tell us where it's plugged. So...
Yeah. Well, as long as we're not losing money, cares.
I mean, we've done it at Maxwell too. We've done it at Maxwell two or three times. And since we've gotten this truck, this truck has quite a bit more pressure than what that machine had. And we can run a bigger nozzle in there and we usually clean it fairly quick, so... But, uh, I don't know. I don't know what the right or wrong answer is, but I think it's probably fair. And if things went right, we could make a little money. And if they don't, we might break even, but, you know? We don't normally do it to hire out to make money at it, but we do it more as a, as a, uh, just to help a fellow community, you know? If we have bucket truck trouble, we call Stafford to come and help us. They don't charge us a dime. If we go over there, we don't charge them a dime. But I mean, sewer's a little bit different, you know? So...
Yep.
I don't know.
Everybody okay with that?
As long as it works getting done, same at St. John's. I don't see a problem with it.
Okay. I'll, I'll talk to Brett. Okay, moving on to water rights.
In your packet.
Go ahead.
In your packet, you had Jim's, um, draft of the letter and then you also had the draft, um, that the county commissioners will be sending along with, um, several different, um, entities that are going to be signing along.
Like school board and different organizations.
Pratt County, I think a couple other counties. Um, it might be beneficial to, if you guys are willing to sign on with this and then we can also send our, a separate one. But we were asked, um, if we would like to sign on with this one. But we need to make an answer, a decision tonight. County commission meets tomorrow.
I don't have any problem with signing on the county commissioner's letter except I think all entities should write their own.
Right.
And I, I say this because the more people that we get involved that find out about this, air heaters had no stroke in this deal. It's going to be the schools that have stroke. It's going to be the city that has some stroke and county commissioners. It's going to be our community and the people that have stroke. A person told me today or talked to me today about it. He said, if you put them in the, our bills coming out, sign the letter, you know, from concerned citizen, sign it. We could turn them in and mail them. We'd set them out with our city bills, get as many people in the community informed that know what we're doing. Don't be bashing Quavera. That's a no win situation to bash Quavera. It's a, they have a water right. It's a valid water right. They're a viable natural resource. We'll get know we're bashing Quavera. But if we augment, if we can get some people on our side to possibly augment the water that's going into Quavera, it turns it into a win-win situation. You know, but bashing them is not going to go anywhere. It's not going anywhere with Senke or any of their representatives. So, the letter I wrote, um, Jamie didn't put it in the packet, the one to DWR suggests that they continue to maintain the boundary of the Lima district as originally drafted. And that brings it, and the reason it doesn't go to this one that's in your packet is that these other people have no control over the Lima. The GMD5 has control over the Lima. They outs, and so if you make the Lima as large as possible, it goes down into where the surface drainage actually goes into the Nenisco on the south and the Ark on the north. But the subterranean water drainage comes in, a lot of it comes into the Rattlesnake, maybe only 10%, but a portion of that will come towards the Rattlesnake. And it's part of the Rattlesnake basin. And when Jamie sent this over to Oren and then he said, well, these other people can't do anything about the Lima, so we thought we'd leave the Lima part in our letter to GMD5, whom we're supporting and... And then to Senke, the governor, uh, the representatives, two senators, Jackie McClasky, et cetera. We just leave that portion out because they can't do anything. But they can, uh, perhaps influence the outcome of this. 4,000 acre feet of water is basically 25 circles. $4 million with gross sales versus 25 quarters of ground having basically a million in gross sales. So, it's through a mid, 3 million in gross sales, depending whichever multiplier you use, three to seven, is a lot of money that will not circulate within the boundaries. And the families that'll leave, uh, there's a lot of young, young couples that I think about eight that have kids in the school. They may not be here. Some of them won't survive. This, this has potential to devastate. Just go to Great Bend and drive west on Highway 96 to Scott City. And once, once you get past Nest City, until you get to Nest City, you don't see any activity. And that was an aguga that David Poe, the chief engineer, put and posed on the white wall. And the banks, the schools, the communities folded up.
It's a desert.
It's desert.
Are you happy with this letter that you've drafted, Jim?
I am happy with this letter. If, if the council's happy.
I've read through both of them and I think we ought to support the county as well.
I think we should support the county too.
I think we ought to send their own, but I think we ought to...
I think we should send their own.
Support the county as well. And I mean, even if the school had one or whatever, I would support them as well.
And, and Josh and I talked about that. The school's going to write one. The county's writing one. I think all of us on the council, mayor, et cetera, should sign this one with city officers. Uh, if you haven't agreed, but, but your, but your letters behind your name, you know, give it some stroke.
I thought the letter that you wrote was really, really well-written, Jim. I think that I agree with Marshall. I think we need to...
I think we need to do both of them.
Exactly.
I guess, and the more, the more noise we can make and make it supportive, I think we'll gain some more. But I don't think we won't get any work bashing Quavera jumping up and down screaming or anything.
Well, you're trying to fight with the federal government with Quavera. I mean, there's, you're not going to, you're not going to win that.
Well, you're not going to win with the Audubon Society because our annual budget exceeds entire net worth of Stafford County.
Yeah.
So, I have a consensus that the council has written both of these letters.
There's one more paragraph that will be added.
To?
To, that just goes to GMD5.
Yeah, to GMD5.
And it's dressed about Lima stuff. So, there will be two separate ones for you guys, but...
Council okay with that?
I'm good with that.
Yeah, good.
Yeah, thanks, Jim.
Is any consensus?
Yes.
And I'd be more happy to sign all of them if that's what we need as well.
Guess that letter looks okay, John.
It's all right. People want to take my advice all the time. Gives me an opportunity to say, I told you so and...
Yeah. I said it was okay.
You okay with it, John?
Yeah, no, there's nothing wrong with it.
Okay. Okay, new business, no new business or executive session on entertaining motion of adjournment?
Wait, can I make an announcement? Just start.
Done in citizens' comments.
No, this has nothing to do with the city council. It's just an announcement that was on the news tonight. I, I'll do it after, after you adjourn if you want me to do that. That's fine.
Sure. Motion second. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Okay, on, on the national news tonight.